Yep. Okay, thank you, I appreciate your patience. I need a motion to come out of advice of council.
Carl will make that motion.
Second?
Ferraro second.
Call the question?
Barringer, aye.
Ferraro aye.
Carl aye.
O'Connor aye.
Dwyer is so carried. I need a motion to go back into regular session.
Carl will make that motion.
O'Connor will second.
Call the question?
Barringer, aye.
Ferraro aye.
Carl aye.
O'Connor aye.
Dwyer is so carried. Next order of business is department reports as submitted by the clerk. I need a motion to accept them as submitted.
Barringer will make the motion.
Carl will second.
Call the question?
Barringer, aye.
Ferraro aye.
Carl aye.
O'Connor aye.
Dwyer is so carried. Next order of business, the approval of meeting minutes from the November first meeting. I need a motion to accept as submitted by the clerk.
Carl will make that motion.
O'Connor will second.
Call the question?
Barringer, aye.
Ferraro aye.
Carl aye.
O'Connor aye.
Dwyer is so carried. Next order of business, the budgetary transfers and modifications as submitted by the treasurer. I need a motion to accept them as submitted.
Barringer will make the motion.
Carl will second. Just one real quick, I just wanted, um, okay, I got nothing. Uh, I'll second it.
Oh, push it down?
No, no, that's yours.
Oh, okay. Take a copy of this, John, for later. Give one to Marty.
I have one.
Okay. Okay, very good. Uh, next order of business is introductory to local law, number-
We can vote on that.
Okay, so we had it first and a second.
Yeah, I've just had a quick question, but the sale of equipment, other equipment, what was that? Second line down is the sale of equipment to PD, other equipment, or something sold?
I'm aware of. Uh, it's probably PD related. Uh, can you just check on that line for me? Eight two six six five? Yeah. So we'll table this. Okay? I'd rather. All right, we'll get that answer tomorrow and then we'll put it on the next month's agenda, okay?
Yeah, I just don't recall selling anything.
I'm only thinking PD, it might have been either some equipment, sometimes they have, uh, I just need to see the A-line.
I know.
We had that, eight two six six five. Okay. Next order of business, local law number ten, introductory establishing the Village of Monroe Code Enforcement Program and set the public hearing. Be resolved that an introductory local law titled Code Violations Against the Village of Monroe's Property Maintenance Law is hereby introduced by Mayor Dwyer before the Board of Trustees of the Village of Monroe, County of Orange, State of New York. And be further resolved, copies of the aforementioned proposed local law be laid upon the desk of each member of the Board of Trustees. And be further resolved, the Board of Trustees shall hold a public meeting on said proposed local law at the Village Road, Seventh Stage Road, Monroe, New York, at seven PM on December sixth. And be further resolved, the village clerk shall publish or cause to be published a public notice in the official newspaper in the Village of Monroe no later than ten days prior there too. I need a motion to, uh, accept this and set the, uh, the calendar.
Carl will make that motion.
O'Connor will second.
Discussion? Call the question?
Barringer, aye.
Ferraro aye.
Carl aye.
O'Connor aye.
Dwyer, aye. Sorry?
When is it?
It said December, I don't know. December sixth. Yes?
Seven PM.
Okay, next order of business is the, uh, moratorium hardship waiver request by the Two-O-A Business Center LLC. Sections two oh one dash three dash three, two oh one dash three dash four, two oh one dash three dash seven, and two oh one dash three dash eight. So the board has had, uh, a presentation, or actually several presentations by the consultants for the Two-O-A Business Center. And, um, we've been given information and traffic studies and, uh, visual prior meetings. And, uh, we had a, um, a waiver, uh, resolution prepared by council. Has the board all read it?
Yes.
Okay? So, uh, I'd like to, uh, put this forward to a vote. Counsel?
Okay, Mr. Mayor and Board, the only thing I would add to this, and if you wish, I can go through and, and summarize what this says.
Okay.
The only thing I would add to this tonight is a signature page for the applicant. So that the applicant acknowledges that the waiver has been granted, should the board vote to grant it, and accepts its terms. So I will add that signature page to the end of this resolution.
All right, so this is contingent upon?
Yeah.
Including it?
Mm-hmm.
So we can make a motion?
Mm-hmm.
We can do the business.
And then it would be contingent on the applicant to, you know, Representative Two-O-A eight signing this and acknowledging acceptance of the terms. And the terms, if you wish, I can go through this very quickly.
Yeah, sure.
Okay, so whereas on June twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, the village entered, uh, a moratorium. And the moratorium suspended all the activity in the village planning and zoning board except for certain, uh, residential applications, one and two family houses. And whereas, uh, in order to prevent an unlawful taking of property and to prevent irreparable harm, the local law authorized the village board to grant limited relief from the moratorium upon written application, therefore, provided however, that the applicant for said waiver proved by clear and convincing evidence, including credible dollars and cents proof that the applicant could not make any reasonable use of its property with any of these uses permitted in the relevant zoning district, that the moratorium caused irreparable injury to the applicant, and that it would be unreasonable and unjust not to grant relief from the moratorium. And whereas such relief, if granted, is limited to the minimum necessary, and furthermore, the village board is authorized to impose conditions on any relief so granted. Whereas on July twenty-first, twenty twenty-two, Two-O-A Business Center LLC, the applicant requested a waiver from the moratorium in order to continue prosecuting its application before the village planning board for site plan approval to construct approximately forty-seven thousand five hundred square feet of, uh, commercial building. With a total of seventy-two thousand five hundred square feet of uses permitted in the general business district. That's the project. And whereas the applicant stated that it submitted an application to the planning board in December of twenty eighteen, which approval procedure would have likely been complete before the moratorium, but for the delay by the planning board, that's an allegation made by the applicant. And whereas the applicant also stated that it invested five point five six one million dollars and change into the project, including purchasing the property, paying for its consultants as well as planning board expert review, and in addition that if approved, the applicant will spend approximately two million dollars in traffic mitigation necessitated by the project, but which will also, uh, benefit the village. Whereas the applicant also stated that much of these investments in the project were made as a direct result of delay on behalf of the planning board, again, that was an allegation made by the applicant. And the applicant also accused the village board of adopting the moratorium without an exemption for the project as an act of seemingly bad faith. And whereas on August twenty-five, twenty-two, the board referred the applicant's request for a waiver to the planning board seeking, uh, the status of the site plan application before the moratorium was enacted, the work done to date, the work remaining, and whether the planning board had a recommendation as to whether the waiver should be granted or not, and if granted, whether any specific conditions should be attached thereto. And whereas by letter dated October three, twenty twenty-two, the planning board responded with comments, appended minutes, and a recommendation that the waiver be granted, which letter and minutes are made a part of this resolution as if set forth herein at length. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees makes the following findings, and I'm going to just summarize these. First, the board refutes any claim that the moratorium was adopted in bad faith. And it goes on to, um, discuss that in a paragraph. Second, the board does not accept the applicant's protest protestations of delay aimed squarely at the village planning board. The board, uh, this board reviewed the planning board minutes, the status from the planning board, and determined that, um, all submissions made to the planning board, uh, were reviewed in a timely manner and that delay, if any, was due to discrepancies in or modifications to the applicant's plan. Uh, and one such modification leading to a zoning board appeal linked the interactions with the DOT and of course the COVID shutdown. Third, the board certainly understands and accepts that the applicant has invested a considerable amount of money in the project, including the purchase of the property, but finds that the village is neither responsible for that decision by the developer to buy the property, nor is it bound to grant a moratorium waiver merely because the developer has chosen to seek discretionary land use approvals before the village planning board and zoning boards. No developer is entitled to a land use approval, no matter how much they've invested in such approval, which is given, if given, is a result of a comprehensive application, environmental review process that ensures compliance with the village zoning law, state law, and also assures an orderly development of the village. All property owners, including this applicant, benefit from such orderly development. Fourth, there is no credible e- evidence that the applicant cannot now use the, um, project site for any other use permitted in the GB zone, zoning district, and realize a return on its investment. Uh, and indeed, that's not the, um, the applicant has not stated that. Fifth, the board rejects the applicant's statement that site plan approval must be coincident to, coincident with review of the project pursuant to SEAKER, the Environmental Quality Review Act. Now, SEAKER may progress and be closed during the moratorium without a waiver. Was not necessary to get a waiver to proceed through SEAKER. A waiver would be required only if SEAKER was closed before the moratorium was lifted and the planning board was then prepared to make a decision. And while the board understands that the applicant's argument that the site, uh, planned public hearing should be held in conjunction with the SEAKER public hearing, the board reminds the applicant that hearings are op- optional under SEAKER. Uh, and even so, the planning board held a public scoping session, which is required under SEAKER, which was closed on March twenty-three, twenty twenty-one. And no other public hearing for SEAKER needs to be done. Sixth, the board has reviewed the recommendation of the village planning board, attaches great weight to that, and accepts its reasoning for recommending that the waiver be granted. Specifically, the planting bo- planning board noted the status of the review, including SEAKER, and the benefit of the proposed traffic improvements. However, as is noted prior, um, the acquisition cost, uh, and the cost of seeking land use approvals uh, are not considerations when determining whether a waiver should be granted. Here, the board finds that the question of whether the applicant can make use of the property without a waiver is relevant only as to the project plan itself. Excuse me, which according to the village's traffic consultant, is not viable without the proposed traffic mitigations. Seventh, the board finds that commercial development along the Route Two-O-A Commercial Corridor will enhance the tax base of the village to a greater degree than residential development, and with less impact to village municipal resources such as water and sewer, and with no impact to the school system. Moreover, the residents who participated in the comprehensive plan workshop identified overdevelopment, specifically residential overdevelopment, as one of the key issues that should be addressed during the, uh, comprehensive plan review. Therefore, the board determines that granting a waiver for commercial development is preferable to granting a waiver for residential development. Eighth, and the final one, the board finds that the pro- proposed traffic modifications associated with the project are highly advantageous to the village, as noted by the planning board and by the village's consulting firm, Kimley Horn, which traffic comments are appended here too and are made a part of this resolution as if set forth herein at length. The board also finds that the lengthy interaction between the applicant, the planning board, and the New York State DOT, which resulted in the DOT's agreement with the proposed modifications to the Route Two-O-A Corridor, which agreement by the DOT could be jeopardized by any delay of the planning board's action. Now therefore be resolved, further resolved, that the Village of Monroe Board of Trustees hereby finds it reasonable to grant a waiver from the moratorium, the Two-O-A Business Center LLC, in order to continue its application before the planning board for site plan approval to construct the project. However, this waiver is subject to the following conditions, which by signing this, uh, resolution, uh, the applicant, um, will acknowledge and accept. If they don't sign it, then this applica- uh, this waiver will be null and void. So number one, the pro- proposed traffic mitigation plan for the Route Two-O-A Corridor will relieve traffic connections at the triangle intersection and greatly benefit the flow of traffic into and out of the village. Therefore, this waiver is subject to the requirement that the planning board approval, if granted, shall be conditioned on the construction of the traffic mitigation measures approved by the TOT and the planning board. Two, the applicant shall be responsible to, uh, to fund the entire cost of constructing said traffic mitigation measures. Three, the applicant shall provide to the village a letter of credit for the full cost of the proposed traffic mitigation measures approved by the DOT and the planning board. Four, planning board approval, if granted, shall be conditioned on the execution of a developer's agreement between the village Board of Trustees and the applicant, setting forth the construction sequencing related to the development of the site and the required public improvements, inspections thereof, offers of dedication, and any other items deemed appropriate by the planning board and the village board. And that is the resolution.
I just got one question. Mayor?
Yes, please.
Um, counsel, on, once the comprehensive plan is updated and approved by the village board, where do, and the mor- and we, and we lift the moratorium, this, this agreement will outlive, live that, or will that?
Understand, as the applicant does, that this does, this does not protect them from any changes to the zoning that may or may not be included in new zoning brought forth by the comprehensive plan.
All right, but if the zoning stays the same up there, commercial, uh, and they're on course, I guess, I guess what I'm, I'm trying to say is, we have an agreement with them where they, they're grant- granted a waiver by this board to go ahead and proceed. Now, we go through our comprehensive plan, we're in agreement, we have our public hearing, we adopt it, we lift the moratorium. Where does this agreement stand? This out, this out, outweighs the, the moratorium being lifted, it continues?
This action doesn't go away once the moratorium is lifted. Okay, they've asked for this waiver, the board is granting the waiver, it's conditioning the waiver as it may on, on this. And this will survive the, the moratorium. Now, if you wish, I can put language that's specific to that in this, just so there's no question in the future.
I, I would feel more comfortable with it, to be honest with you.
Okay, so, so I will-
I think that, that language needs to be in there, that this doesn't go away if the moratorium goes away. That, that's, that's-
Yeah, I, I would think so. I think what's more important to say is that it doesn't observe the authority of this document, should the zoning change.
So this document and the conditions
Well, even if, even if the zoning stay, if the zoning were to stay the same up there, if it stays the same, we go through, we finish up our comprehen- we have our public hearing, we get our input, we adopt it. Then we lift the, the building moratorium. Just want to make sure that this document doesn't go away with that.
With all, with all the constraints, with, not the constraints, but with all the terms that we agreed upon, it should avoid that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I will put a fifth, I'll just, I'll just put a fifth, uh, I don't know if it's a condition really, but a statement that this document survives lifting the moratorium.
That this survive everything?
Yes, okay.
So would that be contingent as well? So first the signature?
Yeah, everything's contingent on them signing, and I just will, will note that, that there will be, um, probably another now therefore be it resolved that this, that, that, that this waiver will that this, this waiver, this document, and the conditions therein will, um, shall survive, um, and be applicable to whatever, shall survive the moratorium and be applicable to the planning board.
Right.
You have to copy heads of them.
Right. Okay, so, um, I need a motion to accept the waiver application, give them the waiver, contingent upon-
As revised, and contingent upon the applicant signing the waiver.
And, and, and the language regarding the survival of this document beyond reviewing.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, you have it? Okay.
So who, who's motioning?
Barringer will make the motion.
Second?
Ferraro second.
Call the question?
Barringer, aye.
Ferraro aye.
Carl aye.
O'Connor aye.
Dwyer is so carried, thank you.
Okay, I'll get that out tomorrow.
Okay.
And I will send it to Mr. Gottlieb. And you.
Thank you. Okay, next order of business is the, uh, payment authorization, the final payment to Regal Utility Services, trustee Carl.
Yep. Resolved, the Board of Trustees accepts the recommendation of village engineer Lankin Tully and authorize Mayor Dwyer to sign the voucher for the final payment submitted by Regal Utilities Services, seven thirty-one Warwick Turnpike, Hewitt, New Jersey, zero seven four two one, for the High Street Owen Drive Waterline Replacement Project in the amount of one hundred seventy-three thousand, two hundred fourteen dollars and eighty-seven cents, and I will put that in a form of emotion, of a motion.
Second, please?
Barringer will second.
Further discussion?
Yep, this is, uh, we only have two streets left now in our distribution system with transite, you know, asbestos cement water line. So, uh, this whole area now is completely done, uh, it's all in ductile iron. And like I said, we just got, we just got to do Forshee and Calvin, and then all our asbestos mains are gone.
Gone. Good work. Appreciate it. Okay, so we have it first and second. Can I call the question, please?
Barringer, aye.
Ferraro aye.
Carl aye.
O'Connor aye.
Dwyer is so carried, thank you. Next order of business, uh, request for electrical inspector, uh, appointment, trustee Farrar?
The Building Department received a request from Sullivan County Electrical Inspection Agency LLC to be appointed as an approved electrical inspection agency for the Village of Monroe. Persuant, persuasive to Village Code, Chapter ninety-four, the village board appoints electrical inspectors to perform third-party electrical inspections of all the electrical installations within the Village of Monroe. Sullivan County Electrical Inspection Agency has provided copies of their documentation for the board to review. The Building Department makes no recommendation one way or another, as long as the insurance is in order. Resolved, the Board of Trustees approves the request of Sullivan County Electrical Inspection Agency LLC and appoints them to be approved list of third-party electrical inspectors for electrical inspections within the Village of Monroe, and I'll put that in a form of a motion.
Can I get a second, please?
Barringer will second.
Just for the public to, uh, know, this appointment, uh, this inspector, this agency, uh, requires them to maintain a five million dollar insurance policy liability against their work. So that's a significant piece, and that's why it's not an easy lift to get this done, and we appreciate, uh, that work.
How many inspectors do we have?
I think there's now four. Okay, so you had a first, second, call the question?
Barringer, aye.
Ferraro aye.
Carl aye.
O'Connor aye.
Dwyer is so carried. Next order of business is an event application, Winter Festival twenty twenty-two. Resolved, the Board of Trustees approve the event application submitted by Mayor Dwyer to hold a tw- uh, twenty twenty-two Winter Festival and outdoor community gathering with music, activities, sleigh rides, Santa and Mrs. Claus. The event will be held on Saturday, December ten, from two PM to five PM on Lake Street. Approval and sign-off have been done by the DPW, Building Department, and the Police Department. The Monroe Police will provide three officers on four hours of overtime to assist with road closures and security at the event. The estimated cost of additional police services is eight hundred and twenty-two dollars. The village's insurance carrier, Marshall and Sterling, will be notified. I need a motion to accept the application as submitted by the, uh, the mayor.
Barringer will make the motion.
Carl will second that.
Call the question?
Barringer, aye.
Ferraro aye.
Carl aye.
O'Connor aye.
Dwyer is so carried. Uh, next order of business, uh, I had received a call from the chairman of the board of the Museum Village, Paul Campanella, asking for some help from the village to help him, um, uh, remove his leaves they've collected. Uh, obviously, if anybody's been to Museum Village, they know the beautiful trees that are there, and the work it takes to clean up the park so the grass continues to grow and, and everything remains vital. So, uh, he reached out to me and asked, uh, if we could have some help, uh, to bring out our vacuum truck. So, uh, I just wanted to bring it to the board's attention, uh, if there's any, uh, questions, uh, I'd be happy to answer them. Uh, but I do need the board to authorize, um, them, us sending over a DPW truck to, uh, vacuum up the leaves and assist them in the removal.
Uh, will that be contingent upon us getting our leaves picked up first?
Yeah, and he knows that. Yep.
I have to say, I think the village has been doing a great job picking up the leaves.
Yeah, we're, uh, I think they're, I think they're ahead of schedule. I mean, they're, they're fourth time they've been in my development today, so, um-
Forty-two miles.
That's only Center Lane.
Yeah.
So it's eighty-four miles, do both sides of the road.
Right.
I'm interested in help. I mean, Museum Village is such a great place, and I think it needs a little bit of help from us and-
Yes, I agree. Okay. So I need a motion?
Barringer will make the motion.
Second, please?
Ferraro second.
Call the question?
Barringer, aye.
Ferraro aye.
Carl aye.
O'Connor aye.
Dwyer is so carried, thank you very much. Uh, next order of business, uh, trustee Farrar, uh, in the Building Department?
Resolved, the Board of Trustees approves the refund request from Hudson Search LLC, twenty-one Robert Pitt Drive Suite Two Ten, Muncie, New York, in the amount of three hundred dollars for two canceled title searches, which were not processed by the Building Department for the property located on Orchard Terrace, two twenty dash five dash ten, and two twenty dash five dash eleven, and I'll put that in a form of a motion.
Second, please?
Carl will second that.
Call the question?
Barringer, aye.
Ferraro aye.
Carl aye.
O'Connor aye.
Dwyer is so carried. Next order of business is a payment authorization for GMC Construction, uh, Concrete Curb Project. Resolved, the Board of Trustees authorized Mayor Dwyer to sign the voucher for the payment to GMC Construction, PO Box three oh seven, New Hampton, New York, one oh nine five eight, for the concrete curb installation in the Compact Home subdivision, which is, uh, the High Street and Cooper and Crati, in the amount of one hundred and sixty-one thousand, three hundred and ten dollars. Uh, the work, uh, just as an FYI, uh, all the curbing has been complete, the backfill has been complete. And the next order of business is the restoration of the, um, the street now, so they're gonna be milling it, and then from the milling, they'll be putting a binder down of asphalt material. I need a motion?
Barringer will make the motion.
Second?
Carl will second, just discussion.
Sure.
Um, is this, is this coming out of the, this current year's fiscal budget, the curb, the curb line that we have curbs and sidewalks?
Yes. And then the, uh, regarding the, the milling and the, um, uh, binder, uh, we've acquired half of it in a core sharing agreement with Orange and Rockland, they'll be taking care of it. And we're looking to engage them to finish the job, because they'll have mobilized- of it, and we're looking to engage them to finish the job, because they'll have mobilized at the same time, so that's a, that's a win for the village.
I, I think, I don't know, you said Ward Paving's got the county contract?
County bid, yep.
County bid? I, we, we need to stay away from recycled asphalt, because that stuff does not hold up.
That's what, that's what I'm told.
He's got recycled?
That's what I'm told, yeah.
Is that all that's out there?
No.
Well, you have to, you, you can actually spec a mix.
Because the problem with the recycled is it's a drier mix, and it just seems after a while it crumbles, and everywhere you go, you've seen it on state highways, and it's, it doesn't work. Doesn't work.
So how do we find out?
Do we have any say in that?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
You don't want recycled asphalt.
And, and that's already been known, I'm meeting with them tomorrow morning, uh...
I, I would, I would...
But how do we know what we're, let's say, we talk to someone and they say we're getting something that's not recycled, how do we know? Is there like a stronger smell?
Plant has a mix, so...
It's a drier mix.
Plant has a ticket, and it tells you exactly what's in that mix.
Okay, so you'd, you'd have the proof?
Yeah, oh, yeah, they have to submit the tickets.
Okay.
Okay, so I need a motion, uh, and a second, uh, we did that, so I need a vote, please. Can I call the question?
Berenger, aye.
Ferraro, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Dwyer, aye, so carried. Uh, one thing I missed, and I apologize, uh, at the very top, there was a due process hearing on a code violation for the Village of Monroe Property Maintenance Law, is anyone here for the, for the property violation due process hearing? Four, uh, one twenty, one twenty North Main Street? No one? Okay. So I believe, having said that, if they're not here for the due process, the violation remains and the enforcement continues.
So, was this due process hearing noticed to the, to the, to the property owner?
Yes.
Okay. And they're not here, okay, so, uh, it should be acknowledged on the record that a, the hearing was opened, and that no one appeared to speak on behalf of the applicant or the co, the violator, the property owner. Now, the board can move forward with, um, it, I, I don't think the question is whether it just continues, I think the board can actually take action to remedy.
That's what I'm saying, that's, that's the enforcement.
Yes, you can take action to remedy, um, do, do you have, do you have a, a resolution for that?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, so I'm gonna have to go with your, uh...
Probably the first page.
So it's back in the first page?
Very first page. Yeah, right there.
Oh, this one?
Yeah.
Oh, it's on the first?
On the, very first page.
Okay.
So I'm gonna read it.
Mm-hmm.
Counsel? Okay. So property location, uh, one twenty North Main Street? Feel good?
Yeah.
Okay. As per Village Code, Article One, Section one fifty-five A dash six E, failure to control trash and rubbish, all land must be kept free of dead dying trees and accumulations of brush rubs, weeds, grass stumps, roots, excessive end of obnoxious growth, garbage, refuge, and debris, which would either tend to start a fire or increase the intensity of a fire already started or cause poisoning or irritation to people or animals or cause or tend to cause or enhance an unhealthy or dangerous or obnoxious condition on said property or on any adjacent or neighboring property. Fire Inspector Pace observed uncontained and uncontrolled garbage, trash, rubbers, and debris around near and behind both the dumpster and the shed garage areas of the area of the rear of the property on nine six twenty-two, the owner was first provided in nine twenty-six, nine six twenty-two with information regarding this violation via text message with photos concerning the conditions related to this violation around near and behind both the dumpster and shed garage areas. The owner was sent the violation with a notice to remedy no later than November nine, twenty twenty-two, there is no been, there's been no failure, there's been no, there's been failure to remedy. Whereas longstanding violations of the village's property maintenance law, Chapter one fifty-five A dash six E of the Village Code of Monroe, have existed at one twenty North Main Street, Village of Monroe designated as tax map number S V L four, two oh four dash two dash eleven, and whereas the property owner has been given proper and lawful notice of said violations and has been directed to correct the violations, and whereas the property owner was given due notice of a long, of a due process hearing to be held by the board of trustees on November the fifteen at seven P M., and whereas the owner did not appear, and whereas the owner has not taken steps to correct the violation, and the violation still exists, and whereas the board of trustees is authorized, persuading to Section one fifty-five dash A eight of the property maintenance law to authorize that the said, that the village undertake to remedy such violation at the property's owner's cost and expense. Now therefore be resolved, the board of trustees hereby provides the owner of one twenty North Main Street... No, that, that's...
All right, so, so you can provide further time to remedy, or...
Should just change that to instant.
No, just take it out.
Just take that whole, uh...
Be it further resolved that the village clerk shall mail a certified copy of the resolution, which is what we're doing tonight, be mailed to the property owner advising him of our action via certified mail. Be it further resolved that any violation that remains uncorrected on the property as of today, the board of trustees hereby authorize the village its contracted agents to enter upon the property to correct the ever stated violation, and at all costs incurred by the village, including administrative, legal, and corrective costs, be charged to the property owner, and such charge shall be added to the tax bill of the property owner if not paid within thirty days of notification to the last known address of the property owner, as shown on the village's tax records. I need a motion?
Berenger will make the motion.
Second?
Carl will second that.
Further discussion? Call the question?
Berenger, aye.
Ferraro, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Dwyer, aye, so carried. Okay, extra that. Okay, I have nothing from my end, counsel, do you have anything right now?
No.
Okay. Anyone from the public wish to speak, come on up to the mic, give the clerk your name and, uh, speak. Please come up.
Can I put this down? Okay. Can you hear me if I speak like this?
Yes, sure.
Okay. Michelle Heronemy, eighty-two Winchester Drive. Um, I would like to, um, give the board a short synopsis of what happened last Monday, November seventh, um, near newly purchased eighty-three Winchester Drive, who, which has been converted to a shul. Uh, local neighbors awakened to a massive amount of illegally parked cars, about twenty-five to thirty, taking up both sides of Winchester and Whitman. They were blocking A D A access sidewalk areas, fire hydrants, stop signs, and mailboxes. Some residents couldn't leave their driveways. Larger trucks, delivery vans, and landscape crews had difficulties resulting from these obstructions. Law enforcement and the mayor were immediately contacted to arrive to find very unhappy neighbors trying to persuade the violators to move their cars. It made a difference. With pressure and persistence, we were successful in having every car removed, but unfortunately, not one was ticketed. No other incidents occurred during the week. Whitman Estates and surrounding communities are zoned residential. Certain changes within our neighborhoods appeared to challenge existing laws. It seems when these questionable events occur, the local government chooses to ignore them until they produce mounds of frustration and resentment by the pre-existing population. And it hasn't helped matters that over the last two years, the police presence in our neighborhood has dwindled. We don't want to hear excuses like we're short-staffed. Our taxes are certainly high enough to allow for a sufficient amount of hirings to help protect and defend our freedoms and way of life. This unfortunate and unacceptable absence of law enforcement produced non-public school bus drivers that speed through our streets and ignore our stop signs, from roughly six A M. in the morning to ten P M. at night, every day except Saturday. Very young children are led to roam the streets alone without adult supervision, making it at times very difficult and a challenge to navigate Winchester Drive. Many of us cringe as we back out our driveways. The weekends for many of us are a time of solace from a busy work week. Weekend traffic and noise at eighty-three Winchester includes but is not limited to large, chaotic, and unsupervised groups of boys whose loud voices and disruptive screams disturb the peace of the surrounding neighborhood. This must be addressed by the board. In conclusion, the village has the responsibility to notify their residents before a planned radical change takes place near their homestead. I hope you heard our message loud and clear. Now, I have two questions to the board relating to the two residentially zoned properties located in the Village of Monroe. Was a permit applied for and granted to the shul at eighty-three Winchester? Question number one. Number two, was a permit applied for and granted to four Forge Road, a ritual bath which is currently under construction? As Airbnbs are not permitted in residential areas, but converting a single-family dwelling into whatever is... That's my message. I hope you hear us. Thank you.
Thank you. State your name for the clerk.
Sure. Hi, everyone, my name is Arnold Tuma. I live at Whitman Estates at eighty-six Winchester Drive for over twenty-nine years, and this is the first time I've ever had a need to attend one of these meetings. So please forgive me in advance if I fail to follow any standard protocols, it's not my intention. My goal over the coming weeks, months, and longer is to find out what's going on in the Village of Monroe. I'm here tonight not to finger-point or accuse anyone of wrongdoing, but only to look for answers and clarification on why this board, our, the police department, and zoning board is refusing to follow the letter of the law in some cases, and not act unprecedented, unchecked bad behavior when it comes to the activity being conducted and established in my neighborhood and in other parts of our village. Nothing that I'm about to say tonight you don't already know or are aware of for a long time now. Let's get started. Wires attached from house to house, running across Winchester Drive, is very unsafe and concerning. What's running through these wires? Sound? Electricity? Other? Well, I don't think you have the, know that answer, 'cause they haven't been checked. If these wires were detached to bad weather or for some other reason, they could cause harm to a passing walker on the sidewalk or cause a car accident. These wires make me feel very unsafe and uncomfortable in my neighborhood. Poles and sticks attached to stop signs with wires running from stop signs to houses, again, these are very dangerous to walk under for reasons I've just mentioned. Roadway or paved path going across village easements and from village territory to town territory, this path is now blocking an easement in the back of my property, and I brought my property here to show the easement, if you want to look at it. This could lead to flooding on my property with this blockage. This needs to be addressed and resolved immediately. Speeding school buses and running stop signs all day and evening, if you want to know what a forty-five foot, twenty thousand pound bus racing past your home doing forty or fifty miles per hour, in a twenty-five mile an hour speeds limit at nine P M. at night in the evening, sounds like, come on over to our homes, especially on Sunday evening. Whitman Estates is no longer a quiet place to live. The house next door to me at eighty-eight Winchester Drive is an Airbnb, or there's some kind of under-the-table rental agreements happening every weekend. Nobody lives in the house during the week, but a different group of people from New York City show up every weekend. This is a fact, since I've spoken to many of the renters over the past year, and they've all said they don't live here, and they're only rented for the weekend. Again, I'm aware to everybody on this board. Bright backyard lights shining all night into our homes, is there a Lumen's limit? Similar to the decibel's limit that you imposed and mandated for sound? I don't think so. The backyard light at eighty-eight Winchester Drive is very bright, and is primarily used for people to walk on this illegal path that mentioned, that I mentioned earlier, which I reported and has been in place for over two years now. What is your position on the current status of the requested road or path from Hilltop Road to Winchester Drive? Let's shift gears and talk about parking in front of my, in front of a U S. mailbox and someone's driveway. What happens during a, which happens during a large overflow of cars visiting the new shul? More on the new shul in a minute. As per the Monroe Police Department, as per the Monroe Police Department, it's not illegal to park in someone's driveway, as long as the homeowner can squeeze out of his driveway. Are you kidding me? Somebody could park in my driveway as long as I can get out and squeeze out? I don't think anybody here would tolerate that in their house. And it's also okay to park in front of a mailbox, I was told by the police officer. Unfortunately, the results of this parking practice is the post office will not deliver the mail if a car is blocking a mailbox. Why is this acceptable to this board? What's happened if some, what happens if someone's mail is time-sensitive? Clearly, we need to establish traffic codes to rectify these problems. As for the new shul located at eighty-three Winchester Drive, Whitman Estates was approved, zoned for single-family residents. I know, 'cause I was the first house built there. Not for commercial religious use, like a church, a mosque, a temple, or a shul. Many towns, in my research, many towns and villages and local municipalities throughout the United States have updated their zoning laws in recent years using many factors, which include establishing a clear capacity occupancy for a building, which is defined as a total number of people that might occupy a building or space at any one time. The occupant's load reflects the maximum number of people accepted to occupy, anticipated to optimize the building rooms or spaces of any given time under all possible situations, or in some cases, one person per fifty square feet. With this capacity set, the local just, jurisdiction established that ample parking must be provided on the property, and the public street cannot be considered for this requirement. Another key consideration was the original character of a neighborhood. When the zoning was approved for construction of the neighborhood, by allowing a religious property to take over a single-family residence, you're changing the character of the neighborhood. The zoning change request was denied. When did the zoning change, when did this zoning changed, change here? Allowing a shul to be in my residential neighborhood, which changed the character of my neighborhood. Because of one, because one of the basic purposes of zoning is to adopt a reasonable regulation in accordance with, with comprehensive plan, if follows that changes which would disrupt or alter the character of a neighborhood would be at odds with the very purpose of the zoning regulation itself. In closing, based upon what I've communicated here this evening, you can see why I'm so concerned. There must be a good reason for the lack of action at this point. Has this board raised the white flag and there is no hope for our village or town? Are you afraid of lawsuits? Or is there some kind of agreement in place already that we're just not aware of? This is what we all need to find out, and because it's hard for me to understand why you're turning a blind eye on this. To be continued. Thank you for your time this evening.
I haven't come up with a prepared speech. I, I, I'm just gonna piggyback on a few things that were said here. Uh, my name is Jim Senning, Seven Whitman Place, um, and I've lived there for twenty-seven years. Um, ju- just to reinforce a, a few things that were said, and really, it's questions we have at this point in time. Eighty-three Winchester, as far as I know, having spoken to the prior owner on the phone two days after Mayor Dwyer, you and I had spoken on the street, um, and he had left me a message prior to that, that I believe, um, the house was closing on the week of October seventeenth. Now, what created such an uproar and such a concern in the neighborhood took place on Friday, the fourth of November, Saturday, the fifth, and Monday, the sixth. Now, if a, if a, if an approval is needed in order for a shul, or a church, or whatever religion it is, to be placed in a residential neighborhood, which again, as Arnie had pointed out, th- that is what our neighborhood was designated to be twenty-seven years ago. Actually, a little bit more than that, 'cause my street, um, Whitman was put in after Winchester had been established. If that's needed, how did the approval manage to come through before that date in a matter of two weeks? And, and again, I have questions here, I haven't had the time really to do much research here, um, but I... I haven't had the time really to do much research here, um, but it will if need be. And again, I think, I think as you probably saw, I'm not a person who's going to come off as angry at all. I, I, I think we just, we need answers. We need an understanding as to what's happening here right now. Um, if, if approval is needed, is it the, um, the zoning board that does that, you overseeing that? Has a meeting even taken place? I just went online and the last minutes that I can find here for the zoning board was on September fourteenth. So if there was a meeting after Sep- uh, September fourteenth, they were supposed to be a meeting on November eighth, I believe. That's after this all happened. So if you could give the folks here a, an answer as to how things fall into place, I think they would all really appreciate that. And again, I spoke to a gentleman there, um, who, who was attending the shul that day, who I knew because he's approached me a number of times to purchase my home. Um, I can give you his name later if I like, I'm not going to announce it here. Wonderful gentleman. He saw me, we shook hands, I just said, can you just tell me what's really happening here? He told me that that weekend event was a one-time thing, and that's all we should expect. Um, he had explained to me that there was actually a shul at fifty-nine Winchester, which is across from the, um, water tower, in the basement. Someone actually does live there. But again, this particular shul now on eighty-three Winchester, he said, no one lives there. So I guess the question people kind of have is, are we in a residential neighborhood or are we not in a residential neighborhood? If, if people are celebrating their religion in one place, in the basement where someone actually does live, is that different than what's happening now? Now, again, all the answers may not come tonight. As far as the buses and the speeding, the only thing I have to add there is on my way home from having picked up my granddaughter and dropped her off, rushing back to the house, um, stopped for the stop sign on Winchester and Whitman, but one of the buses slowly went right through it and a, a police car was driving around the corner and must have seen it. Nothing happened.
What was this?
This was at six oh eight.
Today?
Today. Uh, uh, it appeared to me that the bus was slowly just kind of going through. If I'm wrong, I'm wrong, but this is the concern people have, it's happening all the time.
Yeah, I'm just asking.
It's not a safe situation. The other thing I wanted to mention, because I did tell you this that day when, when everyone was talking together, um, what, what happened really on Saturday may have been a single event, but it has disrupted the neighborhood. I was simply walking my dog. Hmm, a lot of us have dogs and we walk them. I was walking by the house and I was basically, I shouldn't say accosted, but approached by ten to fifteen young boys all rushing towards my dog, um, barking and so forth, and, um, I had to go to the other side of the street. And then on my way back, I figured, all right, maybe you'll be okay. Same thing happened again. If that's something folks are going, going to have to expect on Saturdays, it's unacceptable, I think, um, that in a neighborhood such as ours, that we can't have a pleasant walk with our own families and, and with our pets. It may not happen again, but this is something we're asking you just to look into if you would. Okay?
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else in the public? Do we have anything?
Well, I, you mean, do I have any updates on litigation or anything?
No, no, do we have any updates on any of this tonight? Am I going to just address the public? Is there anything, I mean, other, other than what the board's working on and, and what the PD's working on and what the village is working on, um, all of the concerns and questions and unknowns that you have right now will be addressed and are being addressed as we speak. So I think I can have a pretty comprehensive, uh, reply to everybody and everything that's been brought up tonight. I think everybody submitted, at least, uh, two people have, right? So I think we can pretty much, uh, address everything. Uh, just, um, as a, as a point of information, so I wanted to do a little homework, uh, so I went ahead and I, I pulled from the PD a twelve-month period, uh, of complaints. Now, I know, Michelle, you bring up that there is a continual issue. So this is what I'm giving you now is what has been reported to the police department. Every time you make a phone call just to say hi, it's a blada. Michelle called and said hi, ends the call. Everything is a blada. In twelve months from eleven seven twenty-one to eleven seven twenty-two, two parking complaints were received and two parking tickets were issued, including the event that day. So five parking tissue, five parking tickets were issued, uh, in total in twelve months. So two parks, excuse me, let me go back. Two parking complaints were received, including the one that day. A total in twelve months where five tickets were issued for the entire Winchester car. Two speeding complaints resulting in two speeding tickets. Four radar details were conducted as a result of some of the calls that they've taken. Those four radar detect, uh, details, uh, no tickets were issued while the details were out there. And the detail lasted about thirty minutes in segments of time. Following that, uh, they did ten school bus safety details were conducted, and basically it, by New York State, there's laws and regulations that the bus operate, whether it's there or whether it's outside here or wherever. Ten of them were, were, were conducted and no motor vehicle, uh, violations were noted on those ten buses that were stopped to conduct outside the, the physical bus, the speed that they were doing at that time and so forth. Additionally, uh, just actually, uh, in the past two days, two cars were stopped for, three cars were stopped, two cars were issued, uh, speeding violations on Winchester, two vehicles, not buses.
That evening, about eight hours?
Uh, it was done between eight thirteen and nine thirty PM last night. This is what I have on Winchester Drive in your area for twelve-month period. So if anybody were to call, it's in this blada, everything that I've just listed.
Mr. Mayor, and I don't know if I'm out of line, but it takes over thirty minutes. The reason why you don't get calls is because it takes you thirty minutes to get there. So you're not going to, like last night, there was five cars parked outside of the shul after ten o'clock. Now, if I call you, they were gone by ten thirty, you would have missed them. And that's why you're not getting the phone calls, because it takes too long to get there.
Well, I-
I think you need to patrol the streets at ten o'clock and start ticketing people who are parking on the street after ten o'clock.
Right.
I'll be good at that.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, if I could say one thing that I forgot to up here, I, I think is important that you said, um, I mean, the, the neighborhood has changed quite a bit over the last couple of years, but I think most people here would probably share with you the fact that, um, many of our new neighbors, um, it, it, it's been wonderful getting along, whether everyone's getting along, it's just that something is suddenly changing and it's changing dramatically. And that is the concern right now. Please understand that.
Yeah, I just want to make sure, so yesterday after ten PM, six cars were noted parked in the street. Is that right?
Last night, yes. I stood out there and watched.
Okay. But last night after ten PM, they parked and stayed there?
After ten PM, they were parked outside the shul, yes.
Oh, by the shul?
Yes, by the shul. No police presence. I didn't call because I know they'd be gone by the time the police got there.
But I think the more important piece is, and I'm, I'm not looking for an exchange or back and forth, but I think the point really is, is if you don't call, at the very least, we're not aware of it. If you don't call, we don't think there is a violation out there. I can tell you that, uh, I've been on that street since that incident, probably about fifteen hours, me. I circle around and circle around it. I'm out as late as nine thirty at night circling around. I think one of my trustees has been out there, and I know the PD has violated, uh, obviously we had two speeders last night at nine thirty, and there's other initiatives going to be happening going forward, uh, to try to address some of the concerns and some of the changes and, and so forth. So, but if you see something, say something is important, whether you believe that's going to happen or not is not really of issue. What's important is that you do it, and then shame on us or failure from us if we're not following through. But it would be helpful if everybody from the public did do that. I would appreciate that. No, i- it's not. It's not illegal i- if they, if they're parking in the proper locations, uh, so, but there are things that we do have to address that did happen that day, that subsequently we've come to be aware that they are illegal and, and will be addressed.
And that would go for the entire village?
Everybody in the village, nobody's, nobody's exempt from it, um, uh, which includes, you know, the ADA parking, uh, parking on corners, parking in driveways, uh, anything like that. Uh, some of them are on the books, some of them are not locally on the books, but are in the state statute, so that could easily be called out, you know, section twelve oh two or something, whatever it is. So those are the things that, that, that are coming forward. Okay, well, I appreciate everyone's comments, and, uh, clerk has noted them, and I'll be dressing.
How do we get more information about the zoning that they were, that Jim and, um, I-
So if you, yeah, so we're glad to have you come into Village Hall, and I, I can give you a copy of it if you'd like. Uh, you can go online and you can pull our zoning from online as well, uh, Village of Monroe, www.villageofmonroe.org. Uh, go through the prompts and you'll see, uh, where it'll have, uh, our codes and our, um, zoning will be in there. So you're glad to pick, you know, go through that as well.
Well, Mr. Mayor, one, I, it's a question of mine, is that going to be addressed in my question, the zoning laws for that, for Whitman Estates?
Yeah.
It's a question, so I shouldn't have to go look for it. You should be providing that in my, in your response back. Question, the second question I have, follow, but I know if you're done, but, so how do we get our answers back? Do we come back every Tuesday and ask you again, or?
No.
How do you respond back to us?
Sure. Right, so you're welcome to come back. Next meeting is December what?
Sixth.
December sixth, and, uh, maybe we can do a little, uh, presentation if you'd like. Uh, if I have an answer prior to, and I have your email addresses, if you'd like to share with the clerk, I could send you back an email, uh, as well on any one of those issues, uh, as a whole, you know, of the event. So whether it's your question or not, we could, you know.
The, the question I had about the zoning was that, um, originally it was to be residential, right? So now that it's becoming more than that and the neighborhood is changing, I wanted to understand more about that. Like, is that allowed to have something other than residential homes in the neighborhood? Does the zoning address that, or should I go somewhere else?
I just want to make a quick comment here. Please understand that the, the board has a moratorium in place and is reviewing its zoning. So where there may or may not be any requirements now, there may be requirements in the future for uses that are, um, not really addressed in the zoning. But I would also make a comment that under New York State law and under federal law, if you want to practice religion in your home, you can do that.
Well, you just said if you want to practice religion.
Oh, that's a, he's-
All right, I'm not going to take any argument here. I'm just telling you that, um, the practice of religion in your home is not against the law. That doesn't mean that municipalities cannot regulate things like parking, um, number of people within square foot. I mean, there's a lot of building code that's in state law regarding, you know, the size of structures, how many people can habitate those structures, but, um, I, I don't really think the board should start trying to address state and federal law at this meeting.
Okay. I understand where you're going with that.
Okay.
Okay, so if, uh, everyone from the public has had an opportunity, I appreciate that, and, uh, I need a motion to go into attorney-client for the purposes of, uh-
Yeah, I want to update you guys on some litigation.
Vice of counsel. Can I get a motion?
Carl will make that motion.
Barringer will second.
All the question?
Barringer, aye.
Farrah, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Farrah, aye, so carry. Thank you for coming tonight, and you'll be hearing.